Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for April 19th, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Dany?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
Requested Pastor Jim DePalma from Encountered Church to do our invocation this evening. Pastor DePalma?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life. We proclaim that this is the day that you have made. And we thank you, Lord, for a country that we live in, that we still have some democracy left, and we thank you for a village like we have here that enhances it only. With this, Lord, we pray for great favor, continued favor upon us as a nation, as a village, upon our mayor, our trustees, our police officers, firefighters, our troops, and all those in authority. We thank you for our great prosperity and our peace. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor DePalma.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The consent agenda this evening, all items will be listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and enacted in one motion. There will be no further discussion with anything on the consent agenda at this point. Is there anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
Mr. President? There's a couple of items that I'd like the board to consider adding to the consent agenda. The first one would be the professional services agreement, and the reason I'd like to add that to the consent agenda is everything remains the same at the fortunate amount or the amount of $30, 324,800. It's the same for the fiscal year 2016 to '17. So if everybody would consent to that, I'd like to add that. And then I'd also like to add the riding turf utility banks more lawnmower purchase for Bartlett Hills. That came in, there were three bids that were submitted, and it came in $8,745 below budget, and I really don't think that deserves any additional discussion. So with those items, I'd like to know if we could add those two items to the consent agenda.
Second. Does anybody have a problem then? All right, anything else that anybody would like to add to consent? Hold on, before we move any further, trustee Aaronz, there's a ticking sound on your connection here. Can you hear us?
Nope, and I'm not kicking.
Can tech find out what's making that? Okay. All right. Anything else?
Yes.
Can we take the minutes off number six and take that off the consent agenda, please?
Okay.
Which item?
Which one?
The minutes.
I would like to add F1, the East Oak Glen water main replacement. And I'd like, because I'd like to make note that they came in under budget as well. We had budgeted $412,500, and it came in at $343,105. So I thought that was, once again, very commendable, and I don't think we need to do much. If you can be on the consent agenda, it'd be good.
All right. Anybody have any questions with that? Anything else? Anyone? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove the board and committee minutes from April 5th, 2016. To consent will now include the bills list from April 19th, 2016. It will include professional services agreement, sale of 2016 IRB volume cap, and the East Oak Glen water main replacement.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Dany. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
The rebooting her.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Okay, you're up for the roll call for the amended consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay. Now, entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Dany, seconded by trustee Aaronz. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have on the agenda this evening then would be the entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the board and committee minutes of April 5th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Dany. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Abstained.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have this evening focuses the treasures report. Mr. Mart Noix?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I'll start out with the sales tax report this evening with the month ended November of 2015. Fiscal year-to-date revenue is $1,565,733, and represents a 9.10% increase over the same time period last year. Moving on to the motor fuel tax allotment report. Fiscal year-to-date revenue through January 2016, $791,881, and it represents a 7.89% decrease over the same time period last year.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have any questions for the treasurer?
I have a question. Are we allowed to use motor fuel tax allotment for bike tests?
Yes.
Yes? All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Jeff. And you're moving along to the president's report. Our first item this evening on our president's report is a proclamation for the Building Safety Month. Village of Bartlett Building Safety Month proclamation. Whereas the Village of Bartlett continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens, both everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, earthquakes, and whereas Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas building codes driving growth through innovation, resilience, and safety, the theme for Building Safety Month 2016 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2016 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, Page, and Kane Counties, proclaim the month of May 2016 as Building Safety Month in the Village of Bartlett. And if there's not objection, I so proclaim. Next item we have on the president's report, Bannerman says an event annually every year. They've requested a Class J liquor license to sell alcohol at their annual anniversary event on August 19th and 20th, 2016, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. at the Bartlett Common Shopping Center. The village board created a Class J liquor license for special events like this that enables organizations that currently hold a Bartlett liquor license for the sale and consumption of alcohol to hold an outdoor special event liquor license on a limited basis. And entertain a motion to approve the Class J liquor license.
So moved.
It's moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. And finally, we have, it's time of the year to have all of the liquor license renewals announced. So I will go through these. If there's no objection, I intend to renew the following liquor license. Highland Park CVS LLC doing business as CVS Pharmacy on the Army Trail. Highland Park CVS LLC doing business as CVS Pharmacy at Bartlett Plaza. Little Oaks Retirement Community. TNL Evergreen doing business as TL's Four Seasons. Bartlett Volunteer Fire Association. Hanover Township. Bartlett Hills Golf Course. Hachive Inc. doing business as Mr. Quickies. Zala Krupa doing business as Suburbia Liquors. Friedman Enterprises doing business as Bannerman Sports Grill. Tap Room Hospitality doing business as the Still Bar and Grill. American Drug Stores doing business as Osko Drug. Blackhawk Restaurant Group doing business as Betty's Bistro. And the amended portion of our agenda this evening to receive when we got here, the Coffee House Holdings doing business as Starbucks. And Tipsy Monkey. And the Sri Kojiar Group doing business as 7-Eleven.
So moved. Now, there's no motion.
No motion.
All right.
Next item we have this evening is questions. Anyone have questions at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point, if anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the podium, kindly state your name and your address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Jennifer Cox. This is Dan Cox, my husband. We're at 2007 Ridgemore in Bartlett. We are the family that's asking for the fence variance. We just wanted to say that we hope, we're hoping, and would appreciate a vote in our favor for our fence. It's, as dramatic as it may sound to some of you, is going to be extremely life-changing for the safety of our pets and our family. And to ask anyone if they have any questions, any further questions that weren't in the minutes from the other meetings, that we would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. This evening's first item on our standing committee reports is Planning and Zoning Committee. Chairman Ranky?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item, the 2007 Ridgemore Drive Fence Variation. Jim, can you discuss that for us a little bit? I think some of the members have questions.
Thank you, trustee Ranky. I have brought the maps and the air photo and the pictures that we had at committee. Again, their location at Ridgemore Drive and Cedar Field, they are a corner side yard, so they have the fence restriction and the Cedar Field side of their lot as well as Ridgemore. A picture of their house is coming up next. Again, just a picture of the house. They have an existing three-foot fence that is currently in compliance with the ordinance, and it rises up to six feet in their backyard. They are asking for a change in the corner side yard portion of the fence to allow a six-foot fence to be constructed, basically outlined in the red up there, and it is 10 feet off the property line. Again, showing the existing fence, the next picture we superimposed where the six-foot fence would be on their lot, again, showing the 10-foot off the property line. This next picture probably shows it the best, six-foot in the yellow area, and then 10 feet off the property line where the current three-foot fence is at, that would be vacant or open yard. Some of the zoning board concerns were the vision of the neighbor's driveway, which is in the foreground of the picture. This next one probably shows it best, the neighbor's got his van there, and clearly the van, when it backs out, that open portion would be not obstructed. That's the information that was submitted at the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals did recommend approval, and it was moved forward at your last committee meeting.
I move to approve ordinance 2016-30, an ordinance granting a fence variation for 2007 Ridgemore Drive.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Dany. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to say a couple of things. I actually went out to the Cox's home, and I took a look at the intersection that was there and the variance that they're looking at. And I've served on the Plan Commission, as everyone knows, for a good number of years, and I know for a fact that this is not going to impede any traffic on that. They've set this fence back 10 feet. And probably what was so moving about this is I read through the packet that was presented, the testimony that was given at the ZBA, and they've had quite a difficult time out there. The police have been out numerous times, their neighborhood kids that are doing this, they're destroying their property. They actually have come into their backyard cutting, landscaping lights, and cutting their tie outs for their dog. And the dog literally jumped over the fence, that's when they had the three-foot fence there. They've ruined their Christmas decorations, they've taken pumpkins off the deck and smashed them, they've actually come onto their deck and were banging on the back windows. Mr. Cox is a fireman, so he's gone every third day for 24 hours, and apparently this normally happens at night. They've had garbage in the backyard, they've had pop cans, fast food bags, and beer bottles. And the thing that really stood out when I read this is she's scared. And I believe that, you know, we as a board have an obligation to protect the people that live in our village. The destruction has been happening to multiple people in the area, and I've driven through that area, and I have seen fences that high. The reason she has to come before is before variances because she has a reverse corner lot. There is a home across the street that has a six-foot fence in her backyard, but again, it's not a reverse corner lot. And you go down the street a little more, and you can also find other fences that are there. So I think out of goodness, out of respect to the residents that live here, we have a moral obligation to grant the petitioners' request for a fence variation.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. Since this is a variance and not a special use, can we impose conditions on a variance?
Usually not. Usually the conditions are in, you know, with a special use, but if you had one in particular...
Because my concern is vision. You know, this photograph, I find this to be troubling, and I worry about somebody backing out of that driveway. So it just seemed to me that if the evil we're seeking the remedy is these children who are running wild out in West Ridge, which, you know, is obviously very troubling, then it would make sense to me to limit the length of the term of the variance to the life of the fence. So presumably that by, you know, 10 years from now, the kids will grow up and have moved on to be incarcerated or whatever they do, or they straighten themselves out. But at any rate, that seems to me to be a reasonable condition on the variance.
To amend the motion to approve the variance?
I didn't want to do that without the village attorney saying that he wouldn't whack me for it.
Could do that.
Okay. So you understand where I'm going with this? You'd be able to erect the fence, and then when it degrades or you have to replace it, then the variance dies along with it? So hopefully at that time, the kids won't be troubling you?
If I understand correctly, the life expectancy of the fence would run with the variance if it's granted this evening, and at that point in time, then you'd have to come before us again for an additional variance.
Right. Like I just said. So you're nodding that that seems reasonable to you? You can live with that?
What's the time of year?
The life of the fence.
The life of...
Well, what did you, what's your motion? What were you thinking?
So what?
So why you've heard of the fence lasts 25 years and...
Right. Right. And I wouldn't think it would last 25 years, but right, yeah, for, just for the sake of our discussion, whatever the life of the fence is. Okay? All right, so then I move to amend the variance to have a duration to run concurrent with the life of the fence.
And, okay, we've got an amendment request.
Amendment needs a second.
But let's make sure we don't have any other discussion. Does anybody else have any other discussion or comments? All right.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have, trustee Ranky, can you repeat your amendment request?
Lorna, did you get all that? Sorry. I move to amend the fence variation so that it runs concurrently with the life of the fence, so that when the fence is, needs to be replaced or...
Makes sense.
Yeah.
You have a second?
Been seconded.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the variance of the fence, and a second motion by trustee Ranky, a second by trustee Carbonaro. So we will vote on the amended?
No, just the amendment, which is...
The amendment?
Condition, yes.
So we'll have a roll call on the amendment, which would amend the variation to the life of the fence. Will the clerk please call that roll? Does everybody understand what we're voting on now?
No.
No.
Let's go through it one more time.
Okay, so what we're voting on right now is we're voting on an amendment to this variance request that will be attached to the variance request, which basically states that we'll allow the six-foot fence for the life of the fence. And then we'll go back and approve the actual variance.
So right now, it's just on that condition. That's it.
Okay.
Okay. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now entertain a motion to, actually, yeah, another motion.
On the floor, so we can take a vote.
On the floor, so we can go ahead and take a vote on passing the variance with the amendment. So clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee...
Do you guys understand what's going on? For sure? Okay, good, good, okay.
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now entertain a motion to, actually, yeah, another motion.
On the floor, so we can take a vote.
On the floor, so we can go ahead and take a vote on passing the variance with the amendment. So clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee...
Do you guys understand what's going on? For sure? Okay, good, good, okay.
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries. You're all set.
And I know a contractor that he'll put the fence up for you in the last about 35 years.
That's a great idea, trustee Ranky, so that's good.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have on planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have on our standing committee reports is the Building Committee. Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have under standing committee reports is Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Dany?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have is the reconsideration of the 2016-17 budget adoption resolution. And just give me one second here so I can find my notes.
While you're looking for your notes, at the last meeting, the motion to approve of the budget failed because it did not receive the requisite five votes, it received four A votes. On the second motion, the two votes against it were trustee Carbonaro and trustee Hopkins. So the motion to reconsider should be made by one of the two who voted on the prevailing side.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget.
No, to reconsider first.
To reconsider and then afterwards amend.
So is your motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider, yes.
Okay.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Dany. Is there any discussion?
Do I make the...
Hearing none, no, after we approve this. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now entertain a motion to, actually, yeah, another motion.
On the floor, so we can take a vote.
On the floor, so we can go ahead and take a vote on passing the variance with the amendment. So clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee...
Do you guys understand what's going on? For sure? Okay, good, good, okay.
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now entertain a motion to, actually, yeah, another motion.
On the floor, so we can take a vote.
On the floor, so we can go ahead and take a vote on passing the variance with the amendment. So clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee...
Do you guys understand what's going on? For sure? Okay, good, good, okay.
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries. You're all set.
And I know a contractor that he'll put the fence up for you in the last about 35 years.
That's a great idea, trustee Ranky, so that's good.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have on planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have on our standing committee reports is the Building Committee. Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins.
I think everyone can agree that we need to make sure we don't fall behind in our commitment to Bartlett residents and in particular our public safety needs. The cost of the message board, speed board, is $19,500. I move to amend the 2016-2017 budget amount by $19,500 for a new total of $53,601,791.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Carbonero to amend the budget to include this piece of equipment that we'll be using for the bike, the anticipated bike, the Kickstand Classic, we can start calling it. Is there any discussion about the piece of equipment?
I think the way he made his motion, as it's amended, you're really voting on an amended budget, because you have your underlying budget, and his motion included this line item, but it also included a grand total, which is the old budget plus this new item. So if we approve of this amendment, you're approving of the amended budget.
Everybody understand that? If there's no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Wow.
Next item, that's it for chairman Dany, I believe. You've had both of the rest of your stuff on.
Yes, item C2, professional service agreement was under consent. The sale of the 2016 IRB volume cap was consent, and item C4, the riding turf utility bank's more purchase was approved under consent. We have nothing further this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, chairman Dany.
Was that under consent as well?
Yeah.
Sale of 2016?
Next item we have this evening in the License and Ordinance Committee, chairman Arons.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing on our agenda for this meeting. I have nothing to add to the budget. I don't want to amend the budget, and I'm not in the shower.
Thank you, chairman Arons. Next item we have under standing committee reports is Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, chairman Carbonero. Next item we have under standing committee reports this evening is Public Works Committee Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the Illinois Route 59 and Route 20 no parking ordinance, because obviously we have an issue with parking on Route 59 and 20, which I don't think we really do. As you're aware, we are working with IDOT on several intersection improvements along Illinois Route 51. As part of the agreement with the village, an IDOT, where Illinois Route 59 and 20 intersection improvement, IDOT is requiring that the village prohibit parking along these routes adjacent to the improvements. Discussing this with the police department and village attorney, we believe there should be no parking along the entire length of Route 59 and Route 20 within the corporate limits of the village. The attached ordinance amends the municipal code to prohibit parking along Illinois Route 59 and Route 20. Therefore, I move the village board approve ordinance 2016-36. Thirty-six. An ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 11-1300, Section 6-11-1303, one of the Bartlett Municipal Code to prohibit parking along Illinois Route 59 and Route 20, Lake Street.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Dany. Is there any discussion?
Has there been a problem?
What was that, TL? We didn't hear you.
Has there been a problem there?
Has there been a problem with that?
No, there hasn't. I was being kind of sarcastic, I guess, TL. There wouldn't be no place to park on 59 or 20, even if, that I know of, if you thought about it, because there's just no place to park on those streets.
Okay, are we going to have to put up a bunch of no parking signs?
Parking signs?
Parking, I think she's asking if we would need to put parking, no parking signs? I don't think so.
I was going to have to put up a bunch of no parking signs.
Are they going to require us to put up no parking signs?
It's not required. If we ended up having an issue, then we would, but I don't anticipate it having an issue.
There's no... Yes, the answer to that is no.
No.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. President, that's all we have for this evening under Public Works.
Thank you, chairman Cammer. Next item we have this evening for this evening is new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to share?
I would like to see if we could have on the next committee agenda a discussion about taxation, a discussion about taxation and how it relates to a multi-county village as ours, so if we could kind of compare tax bills and kind of brief the board on how taxes are paid and kind of give us an overview.
It'd be a good discussion, in light of what some of the trustees have brought up here, so.
We certainly would be prepared to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, moving on. Questions? Any questions? Board has, staff? Any questions for staff? We're moving right directly into the committee, the whole meeting, after adjourned this meeting, and with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Cammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Arons?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.